Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this Wednesday, May 5th, 2021 Hampton City School Board meeting. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Lefanja, here.
Ms. Banks Gray, here.
Ms. Cherry, here.
Dr. Mason, here.
Mr. Samuels, present.
Dr. Woodhouse, here.
Mr. Kilgore, here.
Let the record show that all board members are present this evening. I now ask our student representative, Paul Karnick, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Karnick. We now move on to the adoption of our agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Does the Chair make the motion that we adopt the agenda for a May 5th, 2021 meeting?
I have a motion from Dr. Woodhouse. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Samuels. Any discussion? Hearing non-Miss Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Lefanja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. The motion carries. We now move on to recognitions for this evening, and I will turn the evening over to Ms. Gole, and she will be joined by School Board member, Ms. Ann Cherry, this evening.
Well, thank you Chair Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, members of our school board, Superintendent Smith, and our members of our Hampton City Schools family. Tonight, we would like to begin with a special donation to Hampton City Schools, three Hampton High School yearbooks from the years 1925, 1926, and 1927. School Board Member Ms. Ann Cherry is going to share with us tonight about this generous donation.
Thank you, Ms. Gole. I hope this mic is working. Okay. The events surrounding the donations of these yearbooks are astounding, and they've got lots of moving parts and all exciting parts. And it started, actually, on May 12th, 2020. When I was Chair of the Hampton School Board, I received an email from Martha Wynne Stewart, who is the Associate Provost for Academic Support and Classroom Management at the University of Virginia. And this is what she sent me. She said, Dear Ms. Cherry, as you know, I turned to my friend and colleague Leah Puryear in order to find you. Thank you for accepting my message. Below are pictures of three yearbooks that were my mother's. She was then Martha Von Schilling. She was born in Hampton in 1912. She passed away in Charlottesville in 2002 at the age of 90. And she went on to say that her brothers lived and worked in Hampton and were probably more popular than her mother, but she wanted us to have the yearbooks from '25, '26, and '27 because in '28, she graduated from Hampton High School. So I immediately emailed her back and told her how wonderful it would be for us to have those yearbooks. And we talked, and we made arrangements, and she shipped them to my home. But here was the problem. It was in the midst of COVID, and I had a conversation with Dr. Smith, and he said, for something this outstanding, I don't think it would be appropriate for us to just give these books over a Zoom meeting, that this had to be special. So tonight, it is special. But in the meantime, I started thinking. I know I had seen a street in Peninsula Town Center named Von Schilling. So I reached out to my friend Catherine Glass, who is clerk of the council, for Hampton City Council, who can find out anything. And she did research, and she ended up talking to, whom we all love, Mike Cobb. And Mike Cobb said, I work with Joel Rubin, whose firm marketed the new development at that time, which was Peninsula Town Center. And he said, we wanted to name the streets after prominent Hampton families. But this is what he said. The Von Schillings were German immigrants who arrived in Hampton before the Civil War. They were successful bankers who helped rebuild Hampton after the Civil War into the Crabtown era. So I am just so excited that we were able to get the yearbooks, the crabber yearbooks, from '25, '26, '27, that all belonged to Martha Von Schilling. And Ms. Wynne Stewart wrote, when she sent the books, thank you very much for your warm receipt of these books. I will pass it along to my Von Schilling cousins. My mother was not well-known, as were her parents, but she was a great mother. Very best, Wynne Stewart. So now we know about her, now we know about her parents, and it's also interesting and exciting to announce that Ms. Kelly Gole got in touch with Martha Wynne Stewart and let her know we were going to be doing this tonight, and she is watching it live from Charlottesville, correct? And one of the things she said was, I am so happy that I can share this Hampton history and bring it back to Hampton. These are the yearbooks. The 1925 one is very delicate. Then there's 1926. And in 1927, Dr. Smith, you might tell Ms. Mayor, there's an article in here by the yearbook staff that talks about they are going to finally get an athletic field, which is being donated by a man named Frank Darlin. And that that field is going to be located along Victoria Street, not Avenue, and Thornet Street, and that they were going to fill in the swamp. So they were very excited that they were going to have this thing. So I would like to call on the outstanding Executive Principal from Hampton High, Shamika Pollitt, to please come forward and accept these books on behalf of the Von Schillings.
Man.
Thank you so very much to the Von Schilling family. We will prepare a very special place at the Hampton High School to highlight and showcase these yearbooks. Thank you so very much.
I will share that, you know, obviously, I have a script in front of me, and as Ms. Cherry, I'll share a script with her. And then I asked her, I said, please tell us the story. And she said, don't worry. I've done my research. I know exactly what I'm going to say tonight. And I even just learned so much. So thank you so much. Our next recognition tonight is one of our young scholars, Leila Beck Covington. Leila, would you come join me up front, please? I'm just going to have you stand right to my right over here. Come on over that way. There you go. So Leila here is a seventh grade student at Spratley Gifted Center. She placed first in the state in the Virginia Municipal League If I Were a Mayor contest. She competed with hundreds of other seventh grade students from across the state. The challenge to the students was to describe what worked and didn't work for them during the past year of schooling during a pandemic. They were also asked to explain how they would, as mayor of their community, make the lessons they had learned work for everyone. In her essay, Leila identified the positive that works for students during the pandemic as having Fridays to catch up on work and receive remediation time from teachers. And she identified the negative that needs to be addressed as the unstable Internet in different areas of not only her city, but the whole country. So in choosing Leila's essay to be the statewide winner, VML's president, Mayor Willie Green noted, Leila identified two major issues and came up with some particularly good solutions to solve them. She has her priorities in order and a genuine concern for all the students in her community. And so Leila was also just recognized last week at the City of Hampton City Council meeting, where she had the opportunity to sit right beside our mayor, Mayor Donnie Tuck, and call the meeting to order as mayor. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Cherry now.
Leila, on behalf of our entire school board and Superintendent Dr. Jeffrey Smith, I am honored to present you with this certificate. You are the epitome of what Hampton City Schools is about. And for you placing first in the state with the Virginia Municipal League Contest, If I Were Mayor, it had to be outstanding because that's a tough crowd. And I am so excited that we are going to be presenting you with this certificate. But before I do, I want to say that you have so many people in your corner, one of which is a board member here, Dr. Richard Mason. When he found out about this award, he called me and he says, that's my church baby. And I tell you, she is outstanding. And I did not know that your mom is a teacher in Hampton City Schools. Is that accurate? Absolutely. So if any family members of Leila here, would you please stand and be recognized? There we go. We want to congratulate you for the job well done with this young lady. We know she's just going to soar to all kinds of heights. And we'd also like to ask Mr. Lawrence, the principal of Spratley Gifted Center, and her teacher, and anyone here from Spratley in support of Leila, to please stand. There we go. And over here. Thank you. Now I will present you with the certificate. Let me tell you what it says. You're coming up, so I'm going to throw my mask on real quick, okay? Okay, certificate of achievement from the Hampton City School Board. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Leila Beck Covington, Spratley Gifted Center, Virginia Municipal League If I Were a Mayor Essay Contest Winner, May 5th, 2021, signed by Dr. Jeffrey Smith, Superintendent, and Mr. Joseph Kilgore, our Chair. Again, on behalf of the board, congratulations, pumpkin.
All right. We're going to move on to our next recognition this evening, and that is our 2021 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll. Local businesses, large and small, corporate-owned and family-run, play a key role in supporting our communities and local schools. They have the power to shape community attitudes about public schools. The VSPA Business Honor Roll is a way for local school divisions to recognize these local businesses for their support and to say thank you for their vital contributions. Our first VSPA Honor Roll honoree is Mr. Billy Milton from the Kroger in Hampton. Mr. Milton, would you please join us up front?
He's here.
You would stand here beside me, sir?
Thank you. All right. Mr. Milton and Kroger's work has played a crucial role in supporting our schools this very school year, from supporting the State Farm School Supply Drive, as well as their generous donation of supplies that has been invaluable to Hampton students this year. In addition, and I'm sure you've seen this, Kroger has welcomed the division's Buster the Bus, and that was our mobile school bus, to make frequent stops in the parking lot to allow students and families to check out library books. And with their partnership, it has helped put so many books in the hands of our students. So thank you very much. You know, I have to say that Mr. Milton and Kroger came in with a bang. Because when they came into Hampton, I remember, and hopefully you remember, Mr. Milton, we decided to have a tissues-for-teachers event. And you were quick to say, we've got to do this, we got sanitizers. And it wasn't until, what, a few weeks later, Dr. Smith?
Absolutely.
COVID came. And so our teachers were ready, and Bain got everything together for us. But I've got to thank you, our teacher from Moton Elementary, Moton Early Childhood Center, Michelle Johnson, worked with us on that, and it was just an outstanding event, but due in large part to the cooperation of you. So I would like to extend a huge thank you to you on behalf of the entire Hampton City School Board. And if you come up, I will give you your certificate. Okay, it says, Virginia School Boards Association, 2021 Business Honor Roll Program, Kroger. The Hampton City School Board expresses appreciation for your ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them. And it's from the VSPA, and it's signed by Janet Turner Giles, who's the president, and Gina Patterson, who is the executive director. Thank you and congratulations again.
If you would like, you're more than welcome to say a few words if you want to walk over to that booth mic. Please.
Kroger coming into, good evening, everyone. Kroger coming, it's coming to Hampton, meant a lot to us as a company. The store that we opened up is one of a kind. To this day, there's only eight in the nation that are shaped in the way that we're shaped. But what means more than, more to me than anything, and one of the reasons why I was put in that location, is community involvement. At Kroger, our purpose is to feed the human spirit, and we do it through four very easy principles: everyone friendly and caring, everything fresh, uplift every way, and to improve every day. So to me, that means getting better at what we do in our community every day, being a part of the community instead of being a store in the community. It's something that I value, and I'll tell anyone here, if you ever need anything from Kroger, we're 100% there, no matter what it costs. So we're happy to be a part of this Hampton community. Thank you.
And if I could just also mention that when we had the tissues-for-teachers event, he had his store order hundreds and hundreds of sanitizers and sanitizing products. And at the end of the event, all that were not sold, he donated to Hampton City Schools.
We do have one more VSPA Honor Roll to recognize, and I'd like to invite Mr. Rob Shuford, President and CEO of Old Point National Bank, to the front, please. Hello, sir. You want to stand right there for me? All right. Mr. Shuford and Old Point National Bank have been strong supporters of Hampton City Schools for many years. And most recently, they embarked on a three-year financial commitment of sponsorship for Hampton Reads One Book Initiative. This is our community book club that puts books in the hands of our students pre-K through fifth grade. And this generous donation also helps provide literacy supports for our families and engages our community, and it establishes that reading as a core value in Hampton. And one story I would like to share real quick to show that it really is a community book club is that we had an individual share with us, that we had one of our officers from the Sheriff's Department, who was out in the community and saw some of our young students out playing, and he stopped by, and he had just the last book on the seat of his, front seat of his car. And one of the young boys saw that and said, hey, I'm reading that in school. And he said, well, we are too. Because the Sheriff's Department made sure that he had a copy for every single one of his staff, and also had the pacing guide so that they could read along the chapters to know exactly where we were as a school division. So he had the opportunity to really engage with our young students, to ask what, what was their favorite part, you know, tell me about the characters. So it has gone even further than just putting a book in the hands of our young people. So thank you.
Mr. Shuford, on behalf of the entire Hampton City School Board and the Superintendent Dr. Smith, we want to thank you not only for your passion and your dedication to Hampton City Schools, but also for your longstanding commitment. You know, you and your dad go back with Hampton City Schools as long as I can even remember. And you have always been there for us, even when we started thinking about the development of a Hampton Education Foundation. You were at the forefront of that, and we appreciate it so much. We are honored to present you with the certificate if you would come forward. And it is from the Virginia School Boards Association, the 2021 Business Honor Roll Program, Old Point National Bank. The Hampton City School Board expresses appreciation for your ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them. And it is signed by Janet Turner Giles, who is the president of VSPA, and Gina Patterson, who is the executive director. Thank you so much again.
Thank you so much. And I'm so happy you told that story because it reminded me that of all the troubles that we've been through in the last year, doing the videos for the read-alongs for that book, those were some of the most fun things that we did all year long. And I'm looking forward to being able to do those in person in the very near future. The presentation that you made earlier with the Von Schilling books also reminded me, our linkage with the Von Schilling family, the Old Point National Bank and the Von Schilling family go back as long as the Old Point National Bank does with the City of Hampton. And they were prominent in the founding of the bank. We couldn't be more honored to be able to call Hampton our home. Hampton will always be our home. And so to be able to give back to the community that has, has been, been such a strong partner with us for nearly 100 years is, is a great honor. So it is our pleasure, and we hope that it is helping with literacy throughout the city of Hampton and beyond. Thank you all.
All right. Next, we would like to recognize Dr. Vivian Greasy, our Visual and Performing Arts Curriculum Leader, Kelly D., our Teacher Specialist for Music, and all of our phenomenal music teachers. But before I ask Dr. Greasy and Mr. D. to join me up front, I would actually like to direct everyone's attention to the screen for a premiere performance by several of our fourth and fifth grade HCS students.
Woke up this morning, I'm feeling all right. A new day is dawning, night club in sight. I've got a smile, smile, smile upon my face. And it's such a bright, 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 happy day. Yesterday's sorrows are all in the past. There's always tomorrow, so they never last. I put a smile, smile, smile upon my face. And I have a bright, 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 happy day. Bright, happy day. Sooner or later, the blues come around. You've got a face, so they won't get you now. If you put a smile, smile, smile upon your face, you'll have a bright, 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 happy You get the message, it's all up to you. For worse or for better, you get to choose. Just put a smile, smile, smile upon your face, and you'll have a bright, 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 happy day. So just put a smile, smile, smile upon your face, and you'll have a bright, 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 happy day. Bright, happy day. Bright, happy day. Bright, happy day.
So now, would Dr. Greasy and Mr. D. please join me up front? Well, because of Dr. Greasy and Mr. D.'s leadership and the hard work and dedication of all of our Hampton music teachers, the Hampton City Schools Visual and Performing Arts Department has been recognized for the eighth time, and yes, I said eighth, 2012, 2013, 2014, 15, 17, 19, 2020, and now 2021, by the NAMM Foundation as the Best Communities for Music Education. Let's give them a round of applause. So for those of you that do not know, the Best Communities for Music Education is now in its 22nd year. It is designation that is awarded to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement and efforts to provide music, access, and education to all students. And this award recognizes the efforts by our HCS teachers, administrators, parents, and community members who have made music part of a complete education for our students. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Cherry.
First of all, I'd like to say, as most people know, these two guys are the best. And, and the national recognition proves it, but we know it all along. I remember standing on this stage in 2013, saying, what, you won again for two years in a row? Now look at you. So I think it's going to get to the point, Dr. Smith, if Hampton City Schools submits an entry, other people will say, never mind, because we're going to win. On behalf of our Chair, Joe Kilgore, and Dr. Woodhouse, our Vice Chair, and our entire board, and Dr. Smith, we want to thank you for continuing to put Hampton City Schools Music Department at the top. Everything you all do is first-class. Everything your teachers do is phenomenal. We want to expressly thank you and present the Visual and Performing Arts Department with a certificate of achievement from Hampton City Schools, as well as a banner that we're going to have. You know, we like to, like to make sure people know things. So we're going to have a banner that'll be displayed right at your department. And I've got a certificate here if you want to come up and receive it. Pretty soon, you're going to be able to paper your walls with this, right? I mean, it's outstanding. It's a great achievement. It's a certificate of achievement. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Visual and Performing Arts Department, NAMM Best Communities for Music Education Award, from Hampton City Schools, May 5th, 2021, signed Superintendent Jeffrey Smith and Chairman Joe Kilgore. And as I said before, it is so well-deserved. And we thank you for making us look good, both of you all, all the time. Thank you.
Ms. Cherry, just so you know, we did leave space on the bottom so we can keep adding years for the next several.
I think you should. I think you should.
And we had little elves that went and measured the space right by their door to make sure it will fit. And they already have wall hangers, so you're ready to go.
Before you, before you leave the stage, would either one of you all like to address to the audience?
Thank you very much for this recognition. We are looking forward to when we can bring students back on this stage and perform live, as well as all the auditoriums in the city. Thank you for your support.
All right. For our final recognition tonight, it is our pleasure to recognize our three finalists for the Hampton City Schools Teacher of the Year. So just two weeks ago, at a celebration that was actually right here on this stage, it was our very first it was our very first in-person, in-a-school-building celebration, we were able to recognize all of our Hampton City Schools Teachers of the Year and announce our three finalists. And we split them up as a secondary group and an elementary, since we have 33 Teachers of the Year. So tonight, we're going to actually announce at the end our overall Hampton City Schools' Teacher of the Year. So for those of you that are not aware, candidates for Teacher of the Year are considered based on the following criteria. Concern for each student. Ability to inspire learning in all students of all backgrounds and abilities. The ability and willingness to devote time and energy to activities that result in improved instruction for children. The ability to work effectively with the community. The desire to keep abreast of current educational theories and practices. The ability and willingness to make contributions to the field of education. The ability to create and implement innovative educational practices. And be respected, admired by students, parents, and colleagues. That's a pretty tall order. So before recognizing our three finalists, I'd like to thank the members of the Selection Committee, and if you're here tonight, please stand at your seats. We have Ms. Sharon Slater, who was our Chairman and Principal of Jones Magnet Middle School. Slater over there. We have Bryn Seer, Principal of Booker Elementary School. David Cookley, Academy Principal of Phoebus High School. Ruben Casa, Assistant Principal at Lindsay Middle School. Henry Godfrey, Student Representative. And we also had Sherri Murphy, Brittany Richards, and Eric Wilson, our former HCS Teachers of the Year. And as well as, I'd like to recognize Dr. Kim Richardson and Miriam Ortiz, who were a part of the Special Event Committee and made it a wonderful event two weeks ago. And if you missed it, we had it on Facebook Live, which you can go back and take a look. It was pretty spectacular. So thank you for everyone for your hard work.
Let's begin by recognizing Hampton City Schools Elementary Teacher of the Year, Ms. Merrill Innerfield. Ms. Innerfield, would you please join Ms. Gole up front?
I have you to stand right in the center for me? Yep, face it that way, you're good. Merrill Innerfield is a 2nd-grade teacher at Bryan Elementary School. She's been a teacher with Hampton City Schools since 2015, with six additional years in education prior to Hampton City Schools. Lynette Nelms, who is Ms. Innerfield's principal, shares this. Ms. Innerfield prides herself on continuing to grow as an educator and leader. She is motivated and advocates for what she believes is the best interest of all stakeholders. She strongly believes in consistent communication with families and works to ensure that all are engaged in students' learning. She understands the need for social, emotional learning, and communicates this clearly in her classroom, even providing staff training on strategies to support students' mental health and social, emotional needs. She volunteers for leadership opportunities and enjoys helping support new teachers. She finds joy in children and makes learning fun. She goes above and beyond the curriculum to ensure students progress academically, socially, and emotionally. So at this time, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the screen. Ms. Cherry, if you want to move on with your part, and then we can come back to the video. I'll let Mr. Foley bring that up for us.
Okay, that works for me. Again, we have introduced Ms. Merrill Innerfield, Hampton City Schools 21-22 Elementary Teacher of the Year, and we want to thank you so much for your dedication to our students. We want to not only congratulate you, but also thank you for this important work and the focus you have put on social, emotional learning. And that's all very important in a typical year, and we know this was not a typical year nor a typical year and a half. So we are really pleased that you looked at social, emotional learning to make sure that our students continue to progress.
And Mr. Foley, are we ready with the video? Okay. We're getting, it's not working for some reason, so I apologize. But I am going to ask you, if you don't mind, going over to the other room mic and saying a few words.
And as you're traveling over there, Ms. Innerfield, any members of your family who are here, please stand and be recognized. And any members of your colleagues from your school, would you please stand and be recognized as well? Thank you.
I just want to say I am completely honored to be here with everyone today. I was looking through some, you know, pictures on Google about Teacher Appreciation Week earlier today, and I saw one that really resonated with me. It said, "I will teach you in a room, I will teach you on a Zoom, I will teach you in your house, I will teach you with a mouse, I will teach you here or there, I will teach because I care." And that's been just the root of this year for all of our parents, all of our teachers, all of our students, is that we care and we're here, and we are making the absolute most of a year that was very challenging. So thank you to everyone and to my mom and my dad and my grandparents who are watching live on Facebook from New York. I love you to the moon and back. Thank you so much.
And I'm not sure if the Principal, Ms. Nelms, stood up to be recognized. Did you? Please, thank you so much. We appreciate all of you.
And what we'll make sure that we do, since the videos are not working, is that we will post those on social media tomorrow so that you can see the videos that we created for the event tonight.
Thank you.
That sounds good. Let's have another round of applause for Ms. Innerfield. Next, we would like to recognize Hampton City Schools Middle School Teacher of the Year, Mr. Patrick McRae. Mr. McRae, would you please join Ms. Gole?
All right. So Mr. McRae is a 6th-grade math teacher at Tarant Middle School, so that's a little piece of my heart because when I started in education, I was a 6th-grade math teacher as well, so I know what that world is like. He has been an educator since 2017 with all of his years in education in the city of Hampton. Mr. McRae's Principal, Dwayne Lucas, shared with us, "Mr. McRae builds amazing relationships with his students and colleagues. He truly epitomizes the essence of our HCS mission in action. In our building, he is a teacher leader who is respected by students and teachers. Recognizing the value of strong relationships with his students and colleagues, he invests his time to build and foster lasting connections. In addition to his willingness to try new innovative approaches to learning, he uses humor as a tool to engage his learners." So at this time, well, at this time, I can't direct you to the screen, so let me stop on my script there, and I'm going to direct you to Ms. Cherry.
Let's have a round of applause for Mr. Patrick McRae, Hampton City Schools 2021 Middle School Teacher of the Year. Again, on behalf of the Hampton School Division and our Superintendent, Dr. Smith, and our School Board, we want to thank you and congratulate you for being the Middle School Teacher of the Year. And I can tell you, it meant a lot to read the wonderful things you were doing, but to find out that you always have a way of injecting humor and to get into students to do the kinds of things they need to do is fantastic. As we know, humor is a healer. And we want to make sure that you know that we understand and appreciate the special relationships you have built with your students and your parents as well. That's very telling, and that's very important. But before you return to your seat, we'd like any family members to please stand and be recognized. There we go. You know, the life of a teacher is stressful, and it's time-consuming, so we want to thank you for allowing him to be a part of the bigger Hampton City Schools family and the time that is involved. We'd also like for your Principal to please stand and be recognized. Now, moving on, do we want to go to the high school?
Well, I would like, Mr. McRae, would you like to say a few words?
Okay.
I really wanted to thank Hampton City Schools really just for giving me a chance to teach. Four years ago, exactly four years ago, I was a banker. I was in banking for seven years, and I just honestly woke up one day, I'm in a family of teachers, and realized, this is the time I need to start teaching. And I had no teaching experience. My education background is in business, it's non-education. So just for giving me the chance of actually being able to teach, I am so thankful. And due to that, really, I wanted to just always learn, every day, from my students, my colleagues, my administrations. Also, really just build amazing relationships with the kids. And I'm going to be honest, with me, it comes easy. It's almost like it's a calling for me. This isn't a job. This is something I absolutely love to do every single day. I have to thank my family because I work with kids every day for the last two months until 9 o'clock every single day, because it's all about these kids. I love these kids, and that's really about it.
And Mr. Lucas, we want to thank you for providing the kind of environment in which Mr. McRae can thrive. We appreciate that. Now, moving on to the High School Teacher of the Year, will Ms. Michelle Brown Perry please join Ms. Gole at the mic?
Stand center stage. Thank you, ma'am. So before you have Ms. Michelle Brown Perry. Ms. Perry is a photography teacher and part of the Digital Video Production Academy at Phoebus High School. She has 17 years in education with Hampton City Schools. Phoebus Executive Principal, James Harris, shared with us, "Mrs. Michelle Brown Perry truly epitomizes our motto at Phoebus High School: Greatness Every Day, Every Way." And I know I didn't say that as well as Mr. Harris does. She has a heart for working with all young people to ensure that they are college, career, and life-ready. Mrs. Brown Perry spends countless hours planning and delivering engaging lessons, working with community partners to provide real-world experiences that bring the material learned in the classroom to life, and sponsoring extracurricular activities and events for not only our Phoebus students, but young people in the city of Hampton. She is truly deserving of this honor." Turn it back over to Ms. Cherry.
Congratulations, Ms. Michelle Brown Perry. We again are so excited to have just these awesome teachers in this room and so many more throughout the division. I told somebody the other day that our teachers, the definition of dedication to teachers in Hampton City Schools, and I truly believe that. So on behalf of the School Board, and Dr. Smith, and the entire Hampton City Schools family, we want to congratulate you and say thank you for a job well done. We're really excited, not only about the engaging lessons you provide to our youth, but also the real-life experiences that you give them as well. So thanks again for all you do. But before you return to your seat or go over here to do your little speech, I'd like to ask any family members who are in the audience, would you please stand, as well as your Executive Principal, Mr. Harris? Please stand and be recognized. Thank you so much. I can see the proud, proud look on both your faces. You know, Ms. Perry mentioned that she would do anything for her babies. Now, these are high school kids, but they're her babies, and she said that her high school students are still her babies. So thank you for supporting Ms. Perry as she spends many, many hours of her personal time doing anything and everything for Hampton City Schools' babies. Thank you again.
I'm never really good at speeches, but I have a huge voice as a coach. I am a product of Hampton City Schools, class of '89 Bethel High School, and I've had the opportunity to attend and work at several schools through Hampton, and each one has given me something where I've learned how to grow and to give back to the students in the classroom. I've made some amazing relationships with people who are now administrators, who are no longer teachers, and those students who are now grown. And it's interesting when they come through and they say, "You had my mom," or "You had my brother," or "You're still in contact." So I love doing what I do. Being a teacher, especially at the high school level, we have the opportunity to make sure that we're getting out the door so that they can open up a new future for themselves. And those four years go by fast, and we get a chance to really nurture, teach, develop relationships. And it's always amazing when you get to see those children, my babies, that are now grown adults doing amazing things. That tells me that I'm doing the right thing and that I'm putting it in the right place. And I will continue to keep doing it as long as God allows me to, and I want to thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Harris. And my Phoebus and Hampton City Schools family. Thank you.
All right. Is everyone ready? Yes? The excitement is in the air? All right, it is time to announce and recognize the 2021-2022 Hampton City Schools Teacher of the Year. So I know we've got an audience here, so help me out. Drum roll, please. And now Ms. Cherry will announce it.
I have the pleasure of opening the envelope, which Ms. Gole knows I like to peek at things, so she made it black, so I couldn't look through it.
And I put a sticker on the back.
And a sticker on the back. Yes, she did. She even put the plaque upside down. So I am going to open this now. I am so honored to do this. Congratulations to the 2021-2022 Hampton City Schools Teacher of the Year, Michelle Brown Perry, Phoebus High School.
I just asked Ms. Cherry, I said, "I have to speak again," and she was like, "Yes." Again, I want to, I want to start with my CTE family. I know it says photography, and that's the main thing that I teach, but I have been a CTE teacher for several years here, and I want to make sure that all of the people that are in the CTE department, that we are recognized. We love that the opportunity of the academies have been born, and it allows us to shine through what we teach, whether it's through the Medical Department over at Bethel, Engineering Department over at Hampton, through the Marine Engineering, DVP over at Phoebus, and then of course, the Theaters over at Kikatán. Those CTE teachers have an opportunity to be a part of that push to get those students to learn, not only in the classroom, but real-world, that they could actually take beyond Hampton City Schools and move forward to the next level, whether that's working, teaching, going to college. Those opportunities through the academy has been a blessing, not just to me as a teacher, but the students. I want to thank Dr. Smith. I also want to thank Veronica Hurd, and I know she's not here as well, but I want to thank her. She's been a big part of the academies. Mr. Harris has always been one of my biggest cheerleaders, and I want to thank him. My husband, my mom and dad, who are sitting at home watching live, I want to thank them. And everyone at Phoebus. We are a family at Phoebus. We don't do this alone. We do this together, and we look out for each other. We take care of each other, and that allows us to take care of those grown babies that are getting ready to graduate in just a couple of weeks. So again, thank you for this recognition. Thank you for the time, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
And now I'd like to present you with the official plaque, Michelle Brown Perry, Hampton City Schools, "Every Child, Every Day, Whatever It Takes," Teacher of the Year, 2021-2022. Congratulations again, and we have a banner, and we're going to have a board photo op. Mr. Harris, would you please come up?
Please come up, Mr. Harris.
Ms. Michelle Brown Perry is already telling folk what to do up here, so she said, "Bring him up." So come on up.
That was also one of our very first board pictures in well over a year. Well, Mr. Chair, that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gore and Ms. Cherry, and congratulations to all the recipients this evening. I am going to do one more recognition this evening, so I'm asking Dr. Smith to join me here on stage. There's an organization called the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, VAS. And you may know, or you may not know, that they are the organization that selects the Superintendent of the Year for the state. They have eight regions, and from that they select the Superintendent of the Year. Because of the pandemic this year, they decided to recognize all 133 superintendents in the Commonwealth as Superintendent of the Year. And so in teaming with the Virginia School Board Association, VAS created a resolution, and I'm here tonight to read that resolution. And it reads as follows. Resolution of 133 Virginia Public School Division superintendents as Superintendent of the Year for 2020-2021. Whereas, in order to ensure the health and safety of all Virginians, schools across the Commonwealth closed on March 13th, 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and most have provided virtual instruction since then as in-person teaching and learning evolved. And whereas, individual school divisions retain the autonomy to decide whether or not new instruction would continue and the format in which the instruction would be presented. And whereas, stable and consistent leadership by local school division superintendents has been vital in serving children through this pandemic. And whereas, school division superintendents are responsible for the health, safety, welfare, and education of each child while creating school cultures, even within a pandemic that serves all children regardless of their circumstances. And whereas, public school division superintendents utilized guidance from the Center for Disease Control, Virginia Department of Health, Virginia Department of Education, local health departments, and local case data in fulfilling leadership responsibilities in their communities like no other time in their careers. And whereas, local school division superintendents work collaboratively with their school boards, educators, parents, and community stakeholders in providing technology, resources, curriculum content, emotional support, and meals to children during the pandemic. And whereas, traditionally, VAS Superintendent of the Year has been selected via a diverse panel of education associations after reviewing an individual superintendent's ability to demonstrate leadership for learning, communication, professionalism, and community involvement. And whereas, all 133 Virginia Public School Division superintendents have extraordinarily exhibited these qualities while leading their school division and communities during the 2020-21 school year. And whereas, the VAS Board of Directors agreed on January 7th, 2021, to suspend the traditional selection process of determining a single Superintendent of the Year and unanimously agreed to recognize and honor all Virginia Public School Division superintendents as Superintendent of the Year for 2020-21. And whereas, VAS is appreciative of the Virginia School Board Association supporting this resolution and the honor provided to each division superintendent by having his or her respective school board present this resolution to the superintendent to be recognized within the community for which he or she serves and leads. Now, therefore being resolved, that the Hampton School Board does hereby recognize Jeffrey O. Smith as the as a Virginia Superintendent of the Year for 2020-21, as designated by the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, adopted this fifth day of May, 2021, signed by the Chair and the Clerk of the Board.
Mr. Chairman and certainly Vice Chair, Dr. Woodhouse, and members of the Board, it is always a pleasure to represent Hampton City Schools. You heard and saw our young people in terms of that musical selection. And really, for me, and for us as a team, when we arrive every day, it is truly about the achievement and the achievements of our young people. You heard and saw today the talent of our teachers. And so I share with certainly that of our students, but also our teachers and support staff. You have had an opportunity to witness and experience the Board in action and the true partnership that must exist with school board and superintendents throughout the Commonwealth, but also the mere fact that we have to have strong partnerships with families and local businesses. You saw and you heard that today. And so I'm grateful for the opportunity to continue to serve. Someone said, must be Slim Pickings, because this is your second time, Dr. Smith. And I said, you know, I share this with 132 this time. And I'm grateful. So again, as already expressed by our teachers, you really don't travel this road alone. Indeed, it is a true partnership, and we work on behalf of our young people and the families of this particular community. So thank you so very much, and we look forward to the journey ahead and know that we still have great things to accomplish and that we're going to see and experience so much more beyond this pandemic. And so, members of the division, leadership team, and all of our staff throughout Hampton City Schools, the students and the families, I accept this and certainly on behalf of the school board.
Again, congratulations, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, we now move on to Section Three of our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda, which consists of Personnel Report Number 21-09 and Item 3.02, Minutes of the School Board Meeting of April 21st, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Samuels and a second from Dr. Woodhouse. Is there any discussion? Hearing on, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Sefanja?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. Motion carries. We now move on to Section Four of our meeting, which is the Superintendent and Staff Reports. I will turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the school board. I would ask Ms. Torch to come forward, our CFO, and she will provide an overview as it relates to our first report, and that is the FY 2020-2021 Budget Update, in particular, Fund 60, the reimbursable projects. Ms. Torch?
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Chair Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, school board members in the Hampton community. Tonight's budget presentation update is on the Fund 60 reimbursable projects for fiscal year 2021. So throughout this presentation, I'll do a brief overview of Fund 60, then we'll look at the current updated Fund 60's budget. We'll talk about the coronavirus relief funds. We'll discuss the recommendation that's on the deliberation agenda tonight, and then we will end with future coronavirus relief funds. So as a reminder, Fund 60 is used to account for state grants, federal, and other grant funds. We also account for any grant local matches and tuition, for example, for non-remedial summer school, and also the city of Hampton and Hampton City Schools television station, So the current fiscal year 2021 Fund 60 budget is currently around $61 million. When we originally developed this budget last spring, before the pandemic, we estimated that our budget would be about $22.6 million. But because of the pandemic, one, when we look at the state funds, we can see that there is a change of about $563,000. And that is because when we had to close schools last spring, we had to change the way we delivered our programs from an in-person to a virtual. So for one of our larger grants under that state funds category, our Extended Learning Grant, that's a state grant fund that we get, because we did a virtual delivery, that meant we had less costs. For example, we didn't need transportation costs for students. So we had more carryforward funds from grants than we originally projected because of the pandemic. And that is the same for our other funds. You'll see that that changed by over a million dollars. And again, that's just due to less spending at the end of school year 2020, which we are allowed to then carry forward into 2021. The largest change that you'll see is the federal funds. So that change is $37.2 million. And of that change, 88% is directly related to coronavirus relief funds. The remaining 12% of that $32.7 million change is related to our other grant funds, such as Title I, where we had additional carryforward because of the pandemic. So we're going to take a look at our coronavirus relief funds that we've been awarded thus far as of April 30th of 2021. And this is just a quick snapshot of those grants. We're going to talk about each one individually. So first, we're going to start with the CARES Act ESER I. So this was the first grant that we were awarded, and this was authorized under the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security, or what you commonly hear CARES Act. We were allocated about $5.8 million, and the grant period covers expenditures from March 13th, 2020 to September 30th, 2022. This grant has many allowable uses, and there's a link that will take the school board and the community to a list of those uses. But really, just to highlight a couple, they include expenditures for technology, for sanitization training and supplies, also mental health, and any other expenses that are needed to address the pandemic and to plan for any long-term closures. This grant also included the requirement to set aside funds for private schools within the city of Hampton, and that's commonly referred to equitable services for private schools. So of our $5.8 million, a little over $200,000 had to be set aside for private schools who elected to participate in this grant. The next grant that was authorized includes actually eight different grants, and this is under the CARES Act ESER State and Governor Competitive Grants. Again, this is authorized under the CARES Act, and the total of the cumulative eight awards was a little over $775,000. The grant period was from March 13th, 2020 to September 30th, 2022. And again, these grants did include the requirement for equitable services for private schools. This next slide will give you a breakout of those eight different grants, and they include the Vision Grant, which the acronym is spelled out on the screen, but that is to support technology within school divisions. Also, grants for cleaning supplies, school nutrition services, mental health, and also social emotional screener. And again, those total grants total over $775,000, and equitable services that had to be set aside for private schools was a little over $11,000. The next grant that Hampton City Schools was allocated and approved for is the Coronavirus Relief Funds. This again was authorized under the CARES Act, and the allocation was about $3.3 million. The grant period covered March 13th, 2020, and it ends December 31st, 2021. The original deadline for these funds was actually December 30th, 2020. But the allowable uses include testing supplies, PPE, or personal protective equipment, cleaning supplies, technology to support distance learning, pupil transportation. And different from the first two grants, these funds did not include equitable services for private schools because it was not a requirement under this grant fund. The most recent coronavirus relief grant is the CRRA Act, or ESER II funds, and this was authorized under the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act. And Hampton City Schools' allocation and approved application is $24.4 million. The grant period covers March 13th, 2020 through September 30th of 2023. Now, the allowable uses for this grant are the same as ESER I, the first grant that was introduced tonight. However, there are some additional uses, and they include expenditures to address learning loss, also expenditures for facility repairs and improvements, and that's to help with reducing the risk of the virus transmission. And then also the inspection, testing, maintenance, repair, and other project costs to help improve air quality within facilities. This grant also did not require equitable services for private schools. For the ESER II funds, one of the additional requirements, all school divisions have to make sure that they spend and have reimbursed all funds under the CARES, excuse me, the CARES ESER I grant. So because of that, we currently are estimating that we would not utilize these funds until October 2021, based on our spending plan for the first CARES Act ESER grant. So a lot of these grants have the same uses. So over the next three slides, what I want to do is highlight the spending plan from these grants. So this is going to include current expenditures, but also future expenditures based on what's been approved and applications. So one of the first things that we had to do as a division to prepare for this pandemic is make sure that we had devices for all students. So one of the first spending priorities was to expand our Chromebook One-to-One program so that all students from kindergarten to grade 12 had devices for virtual learning. We also purchased electrostatic sprayers, face masks and shields, plexiglass, and a lot of these items will sound familiar because as we provided return to school updates, we discussed the items that we were purchasing in order to address the pandemic. we discussed the items that we were purchasing in order to address the pandemic. Also, medical supplies, sanitizer. We also hired digital program technicians to make sure that we can support the additional Chromebooks and devices that needs to be managed within the school division. Also, Internet Wi-Fi hotspots for those households that need internet connectivity, Zoom licenses, HVAC improvements and roof projects to improve air quality. Those are actually planned under the ESER II funds. The swivel equipment and software, which we've talked about in our return-to-school updates. Webcams, stipends for teachers who elected to teach evening virtual instruction, additional school buses to accommodate greater physical distancing, smocks and gowns for special education teachers, repairs to enhance airflow in schools, headsets and other IT equipment for virtual instruction, and then learning loss, which includes additional funding for mediation and also additional teachers, and a social and emotional screener. So with that, the recommendation that is before the school board tonight on the deliberation agenda is a request to approve this revised Fund 60 reimbursable projects for fiscal year 2021 based on the additional spending and new grant awards for this school year. And if it be the school board's pleasure, we do ask that there be consideration to move this item from deliberation to action if it be the board's pleasure. And before I conclude this presentation, I just want to quickly touch on future coronavirus relief funds. So in, I think it's recent as last Friday, the school division received information on a new coronavirus relief grant. This one is titled the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, ESER III funds. And our allocation is $54.8 million under this grant. You'll see the grant period. It starts with the same date of March 13th, but this ends at September 30th, 2024. The allowable uses are the same as ESER I and ESER II, but there are additional guidelines for school divisions. And they include there is a required 20% use of funds to address learning loss. Also, school divisions must make in-person instruction publicly available. There are no equitable services requirements for private schools, and school divisions may not reduce per pupil funding or staffing for high-poverty schools. And this application is due September 1st of 2021. We will not spend anything from this grant in this current school year, but we do and we will plan to bring this grant back to the school board in the summer before the application is submitted by the deadline. And that concludes tonight's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorch. Do I have any comments or questions from board members? All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Our next report is certainly in the area of the Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, and I think that Dr. Hardy will be presenting information and providing updates relative to the students' rights and responsibilities at this particular time. Dr. Tiffany Hardy, I think probably the first time, Dr. Hardy, that we've had the opportunity to say that in a public forum. She most recently defended her dissertation successfully at ODU, so welcome.
Thank you very much. And yes, each time I hear that, I get very excited, so thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, members of the Hampton City Schools Board, Dr. Smith, members of the Division Leadership Team, Division Staff, and of course, members of our community. Tonight, I have the great pleasure to present the proposed changes to the Hampton City Schools Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. The proposed changes that I'm going to review this evening align with updates from the Virginia School Board Association's policies, the Virginia Department of Education's initiatives, the Code of Virginia, and Hampton City Schools Board policies. I would be remiss if I didn't first acknowledge the many stakeholders who participated in the discussions and contributed to make these recommendations possible. These included members of the Division Leadership Team, school principals, assistant principals, deans, behavior specialists, teachers, school counselors, alternative education teams, school safety and security, psychological services, health services, student support specialists, parents, and students. First, you will note there are a few general revisions throughout the handbook. They occur in multiple places. The date throughout has been changed to represent the 2021-22 school year. We've also updated the calendar. We've included reference to an expanded jurisdiction of the rights and responsibilities that will now reflect the virtual learning platforms in addition to the face-to-face. We've updated the nondiscrimination notice to include additional protected classes in two places within the handbook. In the Student Safety and Privacy section on pages one and two, safety initiatives include two new initiatives, and we've removed information about the Safe School Hotline and the tip text, as neither will be active next year. The two additions that are coming on board are the Vector Solutions and the Safe Schools Alert Tip Reporting Service. On page three, the Severe Weather Plan shows an update to the visual to reflect how decisions will be communicated to the public. And on page four, Section 504 reflects updated language based on Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. Pledge of Allegiance, also on page four, includes updated verbiage and language consistent with Hampton City Schools and VSBA policy, IND. Page five, Parental Participation in School Activities, was revised relative to contacting the Police Department and Human Services. Page 11, Visitors to the Schools, include references to health screenings based on current health protocols. And Sex Offender Registry Notification has a title update for the registry to match VSBA's policy KN, which was recently revised. In the Student Attendance Section, there are several recommendations for clarification, but few substantive changes. On page 12, Attendance Expectations, we added school absences permitted for civic engagement based on recent legislation. Absence Verification Information was moved up to the beginning of the section. For Excused Absences, we clarified the types of permissible absences and documentation families and parents could provide. And for Unexcused Absences, we clarified timelines for school responses. For Excessive Absences and Chronic Absenteeism, we combined the two entries as they were redundant, and that removed the redundancies. For Parent and Guardian Notification, we added reference to requesting families to update schools with new email addresses and cell phone numbers as they come available. Under Responses to Unsatisfactory Attendance and Responses to Unexcused Tardies To and Early Dismissals From School, we changed Consequences Of to Responses To because of the tone and the message. We also changed the title of Attendance Officer to Attendance Designee throughout all of the handbook because those individuals actually have different titles among the different schools. We updated the chart to match the narrative language. And finally, under Homebound Instruction, we revised language to clarify timelines and access to the application form. There are a few recommendations for the Student Learning Section. Under Grading System, there is a revision to reflect the updated and current coding for first-grade report cards. For Exam Exemptions, we revised option number two and removed a redundant paragraph. For Option Three, we removed the chart for industry credential assessments, as those are ever-changing, and we indicated exemptions can be earned from an appropriate credential tied to each course. In Promotion and Retention Policies, we added promotion criteria for Cohart 2024 and revised the Intervention Process Name. For Testing, excuse me, jumped ahead too fast. For Testing, we removed tools that we no longer use in Hampton City Schools. Pre-K and kindergarten readiness screening and Algebra Readiness Diagnostic Test, or ARDT, were removed. We changed Scholastic Reading Inventory to Reading Inventory, consistent with the provider's name change. We defined the three levels of the PALS Assessment and added the Child Behavior Rating Scales, or CBRS, the Early Mathematics Assessment System, or EMAS, based on the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program, also known as VKRP. We added the Phonological Awareness Screening Test, or PAST, and the Scholastic Reading Measure, SRM. We also added the Individual Student Growth Assessments that are coming in the fall, based on the Virginia Department of Education's plans. Under Technology, we removed the previous image, but all of the content remained. And then in the Student Support Section, there's a change in Health Services. We added a reference to health screenings and updated details about albuterol inhalers based on recent state legislation. As you remember from last year, we made significant changes to the Code of Conduct based on the Virginia Board of Education's Model Guidance for Positive and Preventive Code of Student Conduct Policy and Alternatives to Suspension. Adopted in 2019, schools were permitted to adopt and embed this new practice last year. Many schools opted to wait. However, Hampton City Schools was ready to make this necessary shift. This year, there are only a few updates based on adjustments and language updates from the Department of Education. It's important to provide a range of positive and preventive options, so we added several research-based strategies for both classroom-based instruction intervention responses and management, as well as administrative responses, intervention, and management. We updated the definition of social-emotional learning based on the revised CASL definition from December 2020. That's the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. There's now a sixth category that's been added by the state, behaviors that determine persistently dangerous schools. It contains the 16 most severe behaviors, some taken from other categories and others subsumed previously but are now explicitly stated and included. A few of the definitions relatives to student behavior have been revised based on the Code of Virginia, and these are listed on the screen. None of those reflect any substantive changes. They are minor word changes for consistency with the code. There are two student conduct policy items recommended to align with the VSBA policies. Under Search and Seizure, language was updated to match VSBA policy JFCL in terms of when searches can be conducted and by whom. And then also for automobile searches, language was updated to include the potential search of containers in vehicles on school property, also consistent with VSBA policy and Code of Virginia. And this brings me to the end of the recommended changes for the coming school year for the Hampton City Schools Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. Are there any questions I can answer at this time?
Thank you very much, Dr. Hardy. Do I have any questions from board members? Yes, Ms. Cherry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was looking at the document that you sent through with, that outlined the 71-page document. So is it okay for us to ask questions about that?
Absolutely.
Okay. First of all, thank you because we know, Ms. Hardy, with Dr. Hardy, that you always cross all your Ts and dot all your Is, so this should be pretty simple for you. The piece that speaks to the parents that have to sign the forms about, I've read it, and the mediation form.
Yes.
Is there something in there that tells them how, it said it'd be with the students folder, but if I've got the book at home, how do I know how to get it back to you?
So this year was a unique year. Actually, normally, students bring the hard copy forms home. They're signed, they're brought back, checked in by their teacher, and then they are sent to the office to be placed in the students' cumulative folders. Being that we were on a virtual this year, we developed an actual virtual system for it. They were delivered via Google Classroom. Instructions were provided on how to access the forms and sign, and then they could be returned back to the teacher electronically, either through email or through Google Classroom. And we're considering keeping both options available for simplicity for families and for students for the coming year.
Okay, great. And did that include the form from the HEAR agreement?
The HEAR agreement also, yes.
Okay.
All of those will be able, and they're editable versions, so families can do checks, and they can do electronic signature, or they can print, and they can sign in ink.
Okay. See, I knew you'd have the answer for that. And again, page three, the Severe Weather Plan, so glad to see we're using the word severe weather because for so many times, we say inclement weather, which could be just simply rain.
That's right.
And so we're glad we cleared that up, especially with parents. The only other piece I had was, I think it was on page, the part that speaks about, it's pages four and five, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, ma'am.
And it talked about students not, you know, if they didn't want to participate, but not doing anything that could be described as disturbing.
An interruption for those who choose to.
Right. Now, in this, and it said at schools and at events.
Yes.
I noticed there was nothing about the National Anthem. And the reason I asked about that is because when I saw events, I immediately thought about athletic events. And if we had indicated that for the Pledge of Allegiance, if we did not want students to do anything that could be viewed as disruptive, then what happens when we go to a game and say the girls volleyball team decides to take a knee during the National Anthem? Are we even dealing with that in this Rights and Responsibility Handbook?
Well, keep in mind that the wording is interruption, and so we would have to examine, just as we're doing with any behaviors. We examine whether there is an actual interruption. What is the impact of the behavior? If a choice to take a knee is not interfering with another individual's right to participate, then it does not violate any of the language.
Okay, that's good. I just wanted to know because it didn't specifically say anything about the National Anthem. I know that that, and I mean, I know we've been out of school for a year and a half, but that could raise questions when that happens.
Right. And as with anything with behaviors, we are looking at things from an instructional intervention as well as response. And so we're always evaluating, what is the intent, what is the impact? And so choosing to do things that have no negative impact on the environment, the safety, other individuals, it's a non-issue.
I like that expression. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
That's it, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Any other comments or questions from board members? All right. Dr. Hardy, thank you again, and excellent presentation. My thanks to all the stakeholders and that team. This is a large, comprehensive, and complex document that takes a lot of work to maintain. So again, thank you and all the stakeholders for their efforts on this.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Dr. Smith? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Karnick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would also like to thank Dr. Hardy and all the individuals that served on that work team. We first convened, I had the pleasure of being a student member of that work team as well. And we convened in February 2020, I believe it was, right about then. Our operations were disrupted for a time. I believe we did a final conference in April of last year, and we recently had another meeting this April as well to go over those wording changes. So I'd like to, again, applaud the perseverance of the individuals on that work team. Everything was taken offline with this last March, but we got it done, and I'm very proud of the work we did. It was a very comprehensive change, and it was necessary. One of the things that I learned serving on that work team was our new standard is titled Student Behavior Administrative Response, SBAR. The previous was called Discipline, Crime, and Violence, DCV. And that really, learning that really underscored to me the importance of making these changes, making them today, and making them implemented as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Karnick. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. At this time, Ms. Dorch will provide the board with the financial report.
Good evening again. Tonight's report is as of March 2021. At the end of March, our revenues totaled $144.8 million, and were 1.25% higher compared to the previous fiscal year. Looking at our cumulative expenditures and encumbrances, they totaled $170 million at the end of March, and were 6.8% higher compared to last school year. The preliminary spring average daily membership as of the end of March was 18,603. This was 89 students lower when compared to the revised projection that was released back in December of 2020. And when you look at the preliminary ADM versus the original budgeted ADM, it is a difference of 427 students. However, because the state budget does include no-loss funding, COVID local relief payments, and the state budget, as it's being finalized, does include a state learning loss supplement. and the state budget, as it's being finalized, does include a state learning loss supplement, despite that decrease in average daily membership, we are still expecting a positive impact as we discussed back in the January meeting. You will also find a list of transfers to and from the technology classification at the end of March. And within this report, you will also find cross-categorical transfers that do not include technology that are on the deliberation agenda tonight for school board's approval. And just as a reminder, the expenditure classifications that are required by the state, they do include instruction, administration, attendance, and health, transportation, operations, and maintenance, non-instructional operations, technologies, and the last one is debt and fund transfers. So the cross-categorical transfers that are before the school board tonight for approval are those that do not include the technology classification. And if it be the school board's pleasure, we would ask you all to consider to move that item from deliberation to action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torch. Any comments or questions from board members? From our student rep? All right. Again, thank you, Ms. Torch.
Thank you.
That concludes superintendent and staff reports. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to Section Five of our meeting, hearing of any delegations or presentations of any written communications or petitions. And before we start that, since I do have several forms here, I will ask Ms. Bowers to read the protocols.
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Our first speaker this evening is Nikia Miller.
My name is Nikia Miller, and I am a product of Hampton City Schools, graduating from Kickitans High School in 1998. The Monday before schools let out for pandemic leave last year was the worst day of my life. I was informed by the leadership at my daughter Celeste's elementary school that she had been sexually assaulted by another student. To compound this, I was told that she had been assaulted multiple times over a period of two years. To say that this information devastated my family is a vast understatement. We, as a family, have rallied around my daughter to provide her comfort and strength as she navigates this rough road. Her sweet spirit has been dampened with several panic attacks a week. She's scared to go to the school bathroom, and is timid as her assaulter told her that if she told on her, they would kill me. From being Celeste's support, past trauma that I have experienced has been re-aggravated, and we both attend therapy. My expectation was that Hampton City Schools would do whatever was needed in order to provide Celeste with whatever it was that she needed. Boy, was I ever wrong. From the point that this was transferred from Tyler Elementary to the school administration, Hampton City Schools has shown me how much they are not concerned with my daughter's welfare. From the beginning, what was requested from H C S were relatively low lifts. We asked that Celeste be placed at the school of our family's choice. H C S refused. We asked for the assurances that Celeste and her rapist not be at the same school ever again, and that Celeste be given priority. And finally, we asked that H C S pay the therapy costs for not only Celeste, but for myself as her support. Hampton City Schools refused all of our requests, with the exception of being willing to pay $15 a week for Celeste's therapy, which at first, they said we should be happy with receiving counseling from the guidance counselor at her school. We were assured that H C S would make sure that the student who did this to Celeste would receive appropriate discipline for what they had done to her, but H C S used COVID as a crutch to not do so, to the point where Celeste's attacker is currently in the same class as her cousin. Excuse me. Celeste is in a new school, but only because of the advocacy of her parents, not by Hampton City Schools acting on her behalf. On the day that I found out about these assaults, I had a face-to-face conversation with one of the members of the school board, in hopes that by doing so, I would have an advocate on the board who would advocate on Celeste's behalf. I realize now that that conversation was a waste, as time and time again, the school board, through their attorney, have put as many roadblocks as possible in the way to make my daughter whole. The level of disappointment, frustration, and no confidence that I have in Hampton City Schools is palpable. How could a school system that provided me with such a good education be willing to dismiss my daughter's sexual assaults that occurred on their watch? The consistent communications from the Hampton School Board have been that H C S has no responsibility for protecting my children. Your attorney communicated to me, and I quote, "Even if your client is seen in the most favorable light, the Hampton School Board nor any of its employees have any liability." Then, the communications concluded with that out of good faith, you'll pay for Celeste's therapy, but only if she remains a student in Hampton City Schools. So basically, my family should be satisfied by $15 a week after Celeste was repeatedly sexually assaulted on school property, a small fraction of the money that Hampton City Schools receives for every student from the Commonwealth, even though her trauma will extend well into adulthood. Per Hampton City Schools policy, if my daughter had been fighting on school property, on the bus, or before she hit my steps, Hampton City Schools would be able to suspend or expel my child. But when she is repeatedly raped on school property, H C S has no responsibility. How, under any circumstance, will my child feel safe when H C S can't even commit to keeping my child and her rapist out of the same school? H C S can make robocalls every time there is a COVID exposure, but couldn't make a robocall to say, "There's been a sexual assault on campus, the families of the students involved have been notified, and we are cooperating with local law enforcement to Tyler families? There is a sexual predator currently at Tyler Elementary School, and the school board is not concerned about that at all? Whose child will be next?"
It's, it's been five minutes. Can you please wrap up?
As a parent, this is the greatest conflict within me. My academically amazing student has been irrevocably broken by the neglect of Hampton City Schools, and no one on this body cares. If each and every one of you cannot care about the sexual assault of students on your watch, then maybe you don't need to be on the school board. Maybe you need to be replaced. Abide by your credo, every child, every day, whatever it takes.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Our next speaker this evening, and I'm not sure I can read the spelling, it's Akelin? Akelin.
Hello. My name is Akelin Miller, and I'm currently a student in Hampton City Schools. I didn't find out about what happened to my sister until hours after my plane from California landed in Norfolk, and I had unpacked and settled in at home. And to say I was shocked is an understatement. I myself used to be a student at John Tyler Elementary, and to me, as a five- or six-year-old little girl at the time, and to many friends I still have to this day, it was a fun, it was a fun place and a safe place because it's a school, and it's a place where I spent a little bit of my younger, more innocent years. My little sister Celeste didn't get innocent, didn't get innocent years at all. Instead, her years at Tyler and in the care of Hampton City Schools have been filled with her being sexually assaulted, and she will have to live with that, she will have to live with that until she's a, probably until she's a grown adult. That fact being stated, Hampton City Schools have done absolutely nothing to ease that pain, or at least do better with, or at least do better for her future. My mother has asked simple things of Hampton City Schools. Number one, that she be moved to a different school, if not, then number two, the assaulter and Celeste will never be in the same school again. Number three, my sister's therapy, as well as my mom's, gets paid for, all of which have been denied by Hampton City Schools except for the therapy for Celeste, which, by the way, my mom was told that she should basically be glad Hampton City Schools would even do that for her. Celeste is now enrolled at Tucker-Caps Elementary, no thanks to Hampton City Schools, because my mom had to fight for that to even happen. This entire situation has made me feel unsafe, even as a freshman in high school. As a sister, I'm scared this could happen to my sister in another environment, and Hampton City Schools will once again do nothing to help her. As a girl in a Title I area, I'm scared that Hampton City Schools are doing nothing because they believe my nuclear family won't do anything in retaliation, because we are scared. We are not, and we won't give up on Celeste. I'm worried, as an actual bisexual female, there is a real possibility someone could try to do this to me, and Hampton City Schools won't help me, I might say she wanted it. School board members, I want you to ask yourselves, how would you feel if this happened to your child, niece, nephew, or even your sibling? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Craig Knopp.
Good afternoon, school board. As you said, my name is Craig Knopp. I got a few things. I have a child, he's going into kindergarten now. Before, I really, never really looked into any of the school board issues or anything like that. Lately, a few things I've seen come up that I have questions on. I don't know the full answer for everything, so I've sent a couple emails on a few things here and there, just asking for some info. And there's a few other little things that have concerned me too, that just want to bring up and see if you guys have any info on them. But number one, I'm not going to be able to make the meeting for next week's school renaming, but I do have some issues with that. Earlier this year, McGruder, we had a meeting for that, that with city council, a bunch of people showed up. I don't like the renaming, it's cost the city some money, some issues like that. My question is, though, for the schools, can we just, rather than going to people's names, can we just go to like a subdivision-type naming? Fox Hill, Fox Hill Elementary, one, two, three, Fox Hill Middle School, one, two, three, as such, something like that? Or even the city naming on our schools, instead of even going by subdivision? Hampton, one, two, Hampton Elementary, one, two, three, Hampton Middle School, one, two, three, something like that? I'd rather do something like that to save on costs. I know it's going to cost more upfront to go outside of just the, I think it was the five schools that we're trying to rename right now, but at the end, I think that would help us save money down the road, have less complications with people having problems with names as such. Number two, I read an article that the Virginia Vaccine Coordinator, Dr. Dany Avula, was meeting with superintendents to talk about setting up school vaccinations. Now, I have kind of an issue with that, that I guess all, all the testing for all the vaccinations has not been complete yet for children. And I guess my questions are, what has come out of that? Has it happened? And what has come out of that? And if we are have vaccinations in school, how are we going to address people that have parent, or kids that have parents that do not want the vaccinations? You know, because we're left at, if we have a vaccination day, somebody has a kid, they're not getting vaccinated, what is it? Did they have the vaccination already, or is it that their parent does not want them to have the vaccination? Not saying kids bully each other for that, but it's a possibility. But other shots, as far as I know, most of our other shots prior to school, we get outside of school. Why are we bringing this shot into school? Vaccinations, I believe, are free, so I believe they're readily available at all these other different clinics outside of school. So I think that's an item that should be addressed outside of school instead of inside of school. School resource officers, the grant program that Virginia gives out to all the localities. Last year, there was a bill that came into the House of Delegates that both Delegate Ward and Delegate Mugler voted on. It was a bill to take $15 million out from that grant fund, and Delegate Ward voted yes for it, and Delegate Mugler voted, "I'm there," and she did not pick yes or no. Just want to make sure that we're keeping up with our delegates to address school security. I know it's a grant, and like anything else, there's money available other places. If we do not get that grant, higher taxes in Hampton or such. But just want to make sure that we are covering with our, that our local delegates are keeping up with the school board. Another issue I've had, the math changes, or the, the changes that sparked some outrage the last couple weeks or so. Now, I had just started looking into it. I had some emails out there to a couple people. I addressed school board last week, addressed superintendent, and the, the deputy superintendent has been in contact with me also as well. I know there's an original email out, or original, some sort of document that went out to address the changes about math. The Virginia Department of Education recalled it, I assume, I think they recalled it, and then sent out another one. I did get the amended form, but I got some issues with that. So basically, what I would like to do is find out how the Virginia Department of Education trickles down the changes to the superintendent, and then how it goes to the curriculum leader for each class, if I could find that out. I have asked that question in email, so I'm just asking about that. So, all right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers, do we have any other speakers this evening signed up?
No, we do not.
All right, thank you. We now move on to Section Six of our meeting, which is deliberation. The first item on deliberation is item 6.01, the FY 2020-TAC 2021 Revised Fund 50 Budget by Classification. Do I have any deliberative comments? And I will, when we get through deliberation, we will circle back for the two that the administration has asked that we move to action. All right, our next item on deliberation is item 6.02. It is the FY 2020-TAC 2021 Revised Budget, or Fund 60, reimbursable projects budget. Do I have any deliberative comments on that? All right. And then our final item on deliberation is item 6.03, the 2021-TAC 2022 Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook. Do I have any deliberative comments on that? Yes, Mr. Samuels.
Yes, Chairman Kilgore, thank you so much. Dr. Hardy, Ms. Cherry brought up a point earlier when she mentioned the national anthem. And although it is, it is not stated in the handbook, it just only says the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a way that we could also put that language in that same, in the event that the Pledge of Allegiance and/or the national anthem is being sung or whatever, played at an event that if the, if the students decide not to participate, or kneel, or whatever, if it doesn't involve or interfere with other students, that there will not be a infraction? So is it necessary for us to, I'm looking to Nancy Reeves also as a board attorney, if we could also... if we could also add the National Anthem in the handbook?
The reason that we have the Pledge of Allegiance in there is based on the code. I'm not necessarily opposed to considering that. I don't know if it's already subsumed by the fact that some of the language in the code indicates that if there's any behavior that is considered interrupting of either the activity, whether it's academic, athletic, social, anything that interferes with the safety or the learning of other individuals, then becomes a behavior that is subject to analysis and then response. So if anyone behaved in a way that was disruptive, violent, unsafe, there would naturally be a response according to, to the handbook. Certainly, we could, you know, take it forward. It's not currently in a policy.
That was, that was going to be my response, that the handbook reflects a kind of summary, albeit as many pages as it is, of critical school board policies that students and parents need to know about. And until something with respect to the National Anthem is actually in one of our policies, I'm not sure that it would be your custom to move it into rights and responsibilities at this point. However, it's certainly something that we can talk about over this next year.
Yes.
Move it into a policy, and then next year, it could be in the rights and responsibilities, because it, it really should be taken in steps. It needs to be a policy before it ends up in rights and responsibilities. Does that make sense?
That makes sense, Ms. Nancy, and Ms. Reeves, and Dr. Hardy. I think it would be prudent for us to look at, possibly looking at, exploring a policy for that for the coming 2022, '23 school year.
I'd be happy to facilitate work team discussion on that, to ensure that the language is appropriate, representative, reflective, and I think it's a great suggestion.
I appreciate that, Dr. Hardy.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just piggyback on what Mr. Samuel said, I think, and what our attorney has said, I think that would be a good first step, because it would make it clear, as you indicated earlier, if I decide to take a knee, and I'm not disrupting anybody, and I'm not doing anything, there's nothing punitive that should happen to me, if that, if that's the way to look at it. But I think it would make it clear, and it keeps somebody from saying, "Okay, we talked about the Pledge of Allegiance, but we didn't say about the National Anthem, so what do I do here?" You see? So I'm just only speaking from a clarity standpoint, so that the, so that the questions is answered before it's asked. Okay.
I definitely think that's an important conversation that we will have moving forward to the next year, and follow that process relative to policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what you can also do, Dr. Hardy, in doing that process is, you know, if you don't, if it's permissible, Ms. Nancy and the chairman Kilgore, she just keep us in the loop about that, where does that reside, so it does not fall off the board's radar.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels, Ms. Cherry. Any deliberative comments from our student representative?
No, I believe I covered my deliberative comments in the, in the board report section on that item. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to move Items 6.01 and 6.02 to action, if it's the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we move Item 6.01, FY 2020/21 Revised Fund 50 Budget by Classification, and 6.02 to FY 2021 Revised Fund Budget, Revised Fund 60 Budget, two items for action, making one, that would become 7.01 would be Fund 50, and 7.02 would be Fund 60.
Excellent, Ms.
A second.
I have a motion for Ms. Cherry, and a second for Mr. Samuels. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Lafanja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. Motion carries. We now move on to Section 7 of our meeting, which now has 7.01 and 7.02. If it be the pleasure of the board, I will entertain a motion to approve them as a block.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Samuels, and a second from Dr. Mason to approve action items 7.01 and 7.02 as a block. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Lafanja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
I have a statement to read before I vote. As a member of the school board of the City of Hampton, Virginia, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the voting on the FY 2020-TAC 2021 School Operating Budget and School reimbursable projects budget, because my wife is an employee of Hampton City Schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the vote on the budget fairly, objectively, and in the public's interest. My vote is aye. And the motion passes. We now move on to informational items for the board, and I will say that we have three meetings coming up. Our first meeting is going to be next Wednesday, May 12, where this board will receive community input about the proposed name for renaming five schools. Our next work session meeting will be May 19 at the Rupert Sargent Building, 1 Franklin Street, at 6:30. And then our next regular meeting will be held on June 2, 2021, here at Jones Magnet Middle School at 6:30. And if I didn't say it, the public input on renaming is next Wednesday, May 12, 6:30, here at Jones Magnet Middle School. Let's see. We now move on to informational items, and I will start with Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No further business from the superintendent.
Do I have informational items from board members? Anything from our student representative?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No additional informational items at this time.
All right. Just, just one comment, I'm sure, from the entire board, which is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I just want to, on behalf of the entire board, extend our appreciation to all, I think it's slightly over 1,500 teachers?
That is correct.
So, anyway, I hope that the rest of their year goes well. I know it has been an extraordinarily challenging year, and we appreciate them more than we could ever express. Okay, without further ado, this meeting is adjourned.